Two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners. Two hundred. Prior to the meeting, I'm going to ask everyone to stand and salute the flag. Join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. On Thursday, March twelve, two thousand and twenty, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty. That order was effective immediately until it is rescinded or the state of emergency is terminated. On Wednesday, June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, by action of legislation, the order was extended until April first, two thousand and twenty-one. So we have the option of Zoom. You can attend by Zoom or in person. Thank you very much. Call to order and call to roll. Commissioner Stady?
Present.
And Commissioner Shea is present. We have a quorum. Number three on our agenda, we have a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to be going to executive session pursuant to the process under Mass General Law thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A, Paragraph one, to consider an open meeting law complaint against the public offices, namely the members of the Norfolk County Commissioners filed with the Commissioners by Marguerite Lee, First Assistant Register, on behalf of the Norfolk County Registered Deeds, that was dated July one, two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, thank you. I will second that all in favor?
All right, roll call.
Roll call. Commissioner Stady?
Yes, sir.
And Commissioner Shea, yes. Thank you. Two to zero. Yeah, I just thought today, I have no idea. She's a frequent flyer.
Oh, she really? Yeah, well...
Nice woman, but she lives in a very nice house right by our pocket.
Okay.
Commissioner O'Brien has just spent a lot of time with her, but I've been advised I can't put her on until a future meeting because she just handed it to us at twelve o'clock.
Sure.
She was here.
She was. Oh, really? Okay.
You know Carla's restaurant?
Carla's Restaurant.
Used to be in Norwood?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That's right. She can win the town, maybe wants to see herself packing a lot. She'll take it to the but I can't, I'll be on a future agenda.
Wasn't this about allowing dead-amo to use it?
That's correct. She knows the town.
Okay, all right.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. We're now back in regular session for item number four.
Right.
Which are the minutes of the open session meeting of July seventh for approval.
Got a new title, get more money.
Item number four, Commissioner.
Wonderful. Item number four. I would move the approval of the open session meeting on July seventh.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Number five, minutes of the executive session meeting of July seventh for approval and not to be released at this time.
Right. Mr. Chairman, I reviewed those and had communicated to Mr. Buckley a couple of minor corrections.
That's the yellow.
Are they? Okay, thank you. If I could just get a minute to check those? Yes, those are fine. Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, I would move, I suppose the correct motion is amended motion, amended minutes of the executive session of July seven, twenty-one, not to be released until, I'm certain.
And I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Number six, the revised minutes of the open session July first.
Okay, they were here.
Mr. Chairman, that was just a change from reset, adjourned to recess.
Okay, right, that's right. Yes, yes. Okay, so I'll move, I'll move that, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll second it all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Number seven, do we have any public comment? We do have one, but is there anyone else who has any public comment today? In your packet, Commissioner, is a letter from Carolyn Depisa of Quincy relative to some work being done at the Norfolk County Golf Course, President's Golf Course. It surrounds the work that's already been scheduled plus a change order to take the pickleball court at our recreation facility and make some changes, i.e. increase the size of the wall and have it restrikt. We have discussed it with the contractor. It's relatively, I don't want to use the word simple, but it's a pretty straightforward request and everyone agrees, Sub-tenant, mine being principal of this, that it is, yeah.
I say, Mr. Chairman...
Easy to be done in an order. All the contractors, they're doing some other stuff.
I'm all for recreation, big time. My question, I thought you said, is there any plan on making or lining any of the current tennis courts for pickleball? So it sounds like you're saying, take one of the courts and make it pickleball.
They already have done that.
Oh, they have?
The wall is too small. It's got to be two feet higher and then restrikt. The courts are done.
Okay.
They were done in the past two or three years. We finished them off.
So what, what do we have for pickleball courts there, too?
If you come in, it's the last one, and it was at one point a tennis court.
A tennis court.
Five or six years ago, but it hasn't been. The recent past, it's pickleball.
Okay.
But it was kind of a homemade pickleball court.
Okay.
This formalizes the restripes, it makes the wall two feet high.
Okay.
I will also tell you that in addition to, uh, Mr. Depisa, who is known to us, and she's a member there, another member, Greg Burke of Quincy, who's also the football coach at Stone High, had brought this to our attention last year, and we toured the area, it was Mike and I, Cal Minor, that's when we put this, made this suggestion, so...
So do we have a basketball court there, two pickleballs, and do we have any tennis?
One pickleball. We don't have basketball. We have horseshoes.
Okay, all right. Try to get in with that.
That's why we're a recreation facility and not a golf course.
All right, that's right, that's right.
Okay.
And Cal's okay with this?
Yes, and it's, I don't want to use the word simple, but it's relatively easy and it's within, within the cost of the other work that's being contemplated. You know, we're taking a set, set of steps out and making another set and doing some pack along improvements, roll it all.
Good, that's great. Okay, good.
So we will, uh, we will notify Carolyn, Mr. Burke again. I talked to Mr. Burke quite recently. He said, how's the pickleball court? And I said, it's in the package. So this just confirms it, so I wanted to make that available to everyone.
Good, excellent, good.
Number eight, appointment of Joseph Doria to assist, to serve as Assistant County Treasurer in accordance with Chapter twenty-five, Section two of the Mass General Laws. Joe is here, of course, with Treasurer Ballade. I'm going to call on Treasurer Ballade.
Quick, ring up one, Mr. Chairman. It's Chapter thirty-five.
Hmm?
Chapter thirty-five.
Did I say thirty-five? I'm sorry. I said thirty-four?
You said twenty-five, thank you.
Chapter thirty-five, Section two. I was reading it today.
Okay, can you say a few words?
Sure, camera, we're on Zoom, right?
Wherever you are, you'll be there, don't worry. Nice, nice coat, looking sharp.
Thank you.
Great to see you. Looking good.
I feel about it. How about you?
I like it, it's good, really.
So thanks for this opportunity, as you know, Joe D. has the confidence and faith of everyone he comes in contact with externally and internally, and Assistant Treasurer title is something that helps him do his job more seamlessly, because that's early, he can do things and sign things as if he's a treasurer from out of state, but I think more importantly, with the ARPA money coming, for him to have that ability to sign documents along with me in terms of approving them, it just helps keep the ball rolling.
I was thinking, because of ARPA.
Yeah, and I think other counties, Joe, essentially, their folks are Assistant Treasurers down in Plymouth, I'm pretty sure in Bristol, so it's routine. You've been Assistant Treasurer before?
I have.
Yeah, it's just a matter of title. There's nothing with pay or anything else.
No re-rate, no bonus, huh?
No re-rate. I'm sure we're looking for a rate after this.
Next time, Christmas time.
I said we won't do the second floor, that's your raise.
There you go.
So, uh, that's all, it's just really a routine matter to help with paperwork.
Okay.
Because he's essentially been doing the job of from day one for the past thirty years?
Thirty-five.
Smart, but who's counting?
Okay, so that's it. I hope you approve. So I guess you folks swim at some point?
Yeah.
After the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, is there any, are we, I mean, do we need, why don't we take a motion to endorse this? I don't, I mean, it is a treasure call, but we're wholeheartedly endorsing this.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll be very pleased to offer a motion to appoint Joseph Doria to serve also as the Assistant Treasurer of Norfolk County in accordance with Chapter thirty-five, Section two, Mass General Law. Date of appointment effective today.
I'll second that and congratulate Joe. I know, how many years, Joe, have you worked?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, I thought that was, so anyone that can work here for thirty-five years deserves more than an appoint, more than a promotion, but it be as it may, that's what we're talking about today. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Joe. Thank you. Bold business. I have none at this time.
Okay.
Number eight, number ten. The only personnel matter we're going to discuss today is notice of contingent employment for Benjamin F. Snyder of Quincy, Mass. as a seasonal ground crew employee.
I move appointment of Benjamin Snyder contingent employment for seasonal ground crew effective seven, one, twenty-one.
I'll second it all in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Payroll and expense warrants for approval.
Yeah, pick them up, yeah, in front of me.
Right there.
Okay, yep.
The cover sheet, second page. Yes, no, that one. That's all he means.
Right there, please. No, that's the one, right?
Exactly.
That's the one, okay, no problem. Mr. Chairman, I'll move the following for the warrant list for July fourteenth meeting, twenty-two dash oh-two, county has a payroll, a hundred, payroll for the county, a hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred forty-two dollars, ninety cents. So moved.
All in favor? Second, all in favor? It's unanimous.
Second one, Mr. Chairman, twenty-two dash oh-two, school payroll in the amount of two thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars, forty-one cents.
I'll second it all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Third, Mr. Chairman, school payroll, twenty-two dash oh-two, parentheses, one point one, in the amount of two hundred ten thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars, fifty-one cents.
I'll second it all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
And lastly, Mr. Chairman, county expense for July second, seven, two, twenty-two, in the amount of eight, three hundred six thousand dollars, seven hundred eleven and seventy cents.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Number twelve, we have no bid openings today. Number thirteen, no contractor watch today. Number fourteen is the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two Norfolk County assessment, which we've signed, prepared to sign today, requires a vote of Commissioners. In your packet is a copy. Whereas Norfolk County Advisory Board by mode of its meeting, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and in compliance with Chapter thirty-five, Section twenty of the Mass General Laws, annual assessment is six million, seven hundred eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars distributed over the twenty-eight cities and towns in accordance with the document that we're now going to sign today, a board vote reply.
Just a quick question, since it's my first one.
Yes.
So is this based on a percentage established by statute? Each town gets a certain assessment based on the, is it per capita or population or?
I believe it's population.
It's population.
I believe that is correct.
It's, does anyone know? Anyone happen to know? It's valuation, isn't it? Not population.
I didn't know, it was through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, this, we get the, let's see, right here, we get the equalized values for all the county municipalities, and we plug it into spreadsheet, and they also give us the county tax rate. So we have the county tax, the total county tax, as you, as the chair read, was six million, seven eighty-seven, three, one, four. So that is divided by the county tax rate, which I said comes right from DOR, which is one twenty point five one, okay, and we come up with fifty-six thousand, three, two, one point five nine. And, as I said, each town is given a county tax rate, so if your county tax rate is one on the dot, your county assessment is that fifty-six thousand, three, two, one point five nine. And as luck would have it, we actually do have a community that has a one point zero zero county tax rate, that is Millis. So that's, that's basically how it's figured.
That's fitting, okay.
So I hope that shows.
So if it's higher, lower, whatever, that's the rate determined, but our total amount of revenue for moving forward the next year, we would be looking at generating that revenue?
Correct.
For next year's fiscal?
Correct.
Okay, good, yeah, okay.
Norfolk, twenty-two.
Yes, I'm saying, I meant, you know, twenty-two.
Yes.
All right. So, Mr. Chairman, you need a motion? I'll move it.
We do. We need, we need to accept this.
So I move that the, that the sum of six million, seven hundred eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars, the county tax, let's see, wait, is that my motion? No, who would it be?
We accept the Norfolk County assessment.
We would vote to accept the Norfolk County Advisory Board vote in compliance with Chapter thirty-five, Section thirty of the Mass General Laws, for the amount of six million, seven hundred eighty thousand, three, fourteen, as the tax for Norfolk County for fiscal year from July two thousand and twenty-one to June thirty, twenty-three-two, to be assessed, paid and collected, and apply according to law, and be apportioned as a line and is presented to us on this meeting, subject to all the other requirements of the law dated this date. Just to put it where it's, Section thirty-one. Chapter thirty-five, Section thirty-one. Thank you, Joe. So I'm in it.
Okay, I will second it and will call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Number fifteen, report of the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one directed program.
Good, F, that's already signed.
It's going to go to Peter, that's fine.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The report relative to the American Rescue Plan Act follows from your vote last week to direct the county treasurer to accept the funds on behalf of Norfolk County. Of course, funds was sent down to the treasurer's office with that order. I understand the treasurer's office has begun the process of applying for the funds. It is an arduous process. I understand they're still undergoing that action and expect it to be successful any day. Once the funds are deposited, they'll be going into a bank account designated by the county treasurer. On the program side, there's been some work in the direction of looking at other county programs. This past week, I had a conference call with Plymouth County Treasurer Tom O'Brien and his ARPA Coordinator Mac Hanley. We went through Plymouth County's status with, with respect to the development of their program. Currently, they're expecting their newly selected CPA firm, Clifton Larson, to deliver a program to Plymouth County within thirty days. The program is a broad use word, but it describes effectively the design where the applicant, cities and towns, can access the application through an electronic portal on their website. Plymouth County's currently working out the details, but they, they are streamlining the process so that any application will have to hit against one of the declared purpose areas within the grant. So if you were example, for example, if you have a county, if you're a city or town in the county, you're going to, you know, replace one mile of water pipe, you're going to connect your application to that purpose area, make the application, all the forms, the indemnification, and other backup documentation are already prepared by the county. So all the community really needs to do is make application. Mr. Treasurer O'Brien, right now, is in the middle of kind of finalizing how to pulse or move the grant applications once they are received. He does not intend to move the grant approvals all at once. There will be some allotment processes associated with that, and those details will be forthcoming. As Norfolk County proceeds with its program development, I'm very keen to understand more about what Plymouth County is doing. I see them as a model to follow. There are some restrictions associated with what Plymouth County is doing, for example. In previous meetings, I've expressed to the Commissioners the potential need to look at a variety of different firms and what they can offer us for services. I still believe we should do that, and we should also evaluate what Plymouth County's CPA firm is going to offer as well. So with your permission, I can provide you each with selected firms, begin scheduling virtual meetings with them. My goal is to provide you with a scope of work that I intend this work to capture, but I would strongly encourage you to have these meetings within the next two to three weeks. The cover letter that was sent out earlier this week to all Norfolk cities and towns announcing your decision and your vote included the projected plan to have a virtual meeting with all select board executives and/or advisory board members within thirty days. So the goal will be to have some idea of what we're doing from a planned perspective within that thirty-day plan to explain it to the host community so that they can understand the expectation of what the county's doing. And as you may recall from the letter, following that meeting, within two weeks, we would hopefully then have a discussion with the finance committee about the plan with respect to a budget and the associated costs. That's where we stand. So within the next week, I hope to have more details from Plymouth County, as well as the names of CPA firms to your consideration to schedule virtual meetings with.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions?
Yeah, several, just real quick. I'll make sure. Number one, I'm going to work backwards. Do we know when we're going to have our next joint meeting of all the counties? Has that been set up yet? Under the multiple group of county commissioners?
The Clark County, I believe that was August, was it the seventh bill?
Okay, thank you, that is set, then. Okay.
I think so, we're working with the A.G.
Okay, great, okay, thank you. That's good. All right, working backwards. So already, good job on the letter. Couple of local, especially ones from my own town, reached out already, and they had a department meeting, and of course, top of the discussion was ARPA, and of course, they wanted to know, you know, how soon, how fast, but they appreciated getting the letter, that was great. So my question, maybe in a general way, how do we know, what's the formula for how much each community can be allotted or granted? Now, if we're going to have a grant application, let's say, let's take Avon or Millis or Norfolk, can they keep applying? Is it first come, first served, or is there a certain amount that we're supposed to say, okay, within your range, you're going to be allowed to get this much? That's my first question.
Great question. I would argue, without defining that yet, within the program, the answer to your question is much more in the form of category, where the community will have an idea of what their total pot of funds would be based on their per capita measurement.
That was a question that sort of posed to me, but that's good, that's good.
Right. It's a great question, because I think it drives everything, Commissioner. And one of the things that we decided to do this week is have a follow-up conversation with our partners at A and F. Assistant Director Buckley sent them up, and he and I conversed with the team at A and F, because one of the things we also need to understand is for the defunct counties, how is the state planning to distribute the funds? Are they going to use the population model or not? They have not heard anything from the Treasury yet about the distribution of the defunct county funds.
Okay.
So in some, some respect, Commissioner Stady, we're ahead of the defunct county dispersments, but they don't yet have an answer from the Treasury on how they can disperse it, and they expect to be able to have an answer shortly along the lines of a per capita dispersment.
Okay, good, thank you. Final one, I think, Mr. Chairman, through you and everybody. So I actually got, this was in way back when Congressman Oshinclaw, I pronounced this incorrectly, ran into him at a function in Sharon, and he had told me about, you know, pushing water projects. He had also mentioned a nonprofit entity that could be of assistance or even promoting water. I think it was in the Plaza Valley Watership, I could be wrong. So anyway, what happens in terms of non-governmental entities that may seek this funding to promote water?
Another great question.
Okay.
So the choice is yours. As I understand the Plymouth model right now, it includes the dispersment of funds only, only to cities and towns.
I see.
And that would then require the city or town, through their application, if they have an interest in a local group, to find a partnership to, to carry out the task of that grant application.
Okay.
Plymouth County does not anticipate through their Commissioners' vote to open the door to a direct award to those groups. That'll be your decision when that time comes.
Interesting. So one way we could approach is to open the door, possibly, or perhaps encourage them to work with the local town.
Correct.
Like saying in the Plaza Valley, work with your knowledge, your can, your denim.
Yeah.
All right, so, okay.
Because theoretically, if you think of it this way, Dick, one of the problems is if you have ten dollars to distribute to the whole county, if we now, and that's based on, right, now, now, all of a sudden, that first question you asked is in jeopardy, because if we're distributing it based on population, where do the funds come from for the nonprofit? If they're not part of that equation, so...
Well, that was my, you know, that's, that's why I wanted to ask today, get it out there. All right.
It's definitely going to come up.
Because there are, and there's another one. There's a veterans program I was made aware of by a person who's, well, whatever, she does a question, uses horses to help veterans of PTSD, very, very noble program, and she wanted to see if there's any money using ARPA. I suppose many people will be coming to the well looking for help, and I suppose we'll try to do the best we can, but the more we try to help those groups, that could impact the local towns, too. So not to mention, maybe perhaps even our own needs, but we won't.
This, this very point was brought to my attention early, early on by Assistant Director Buckley, who must have been having insomnia one night and decided to read the whole program and said, you know, there's a option in there for private entities in different cities and towns that would be eligible, whether they're community action or whatever, but, so I've been thinking about it, and then in my own community was, the question was asked.
Yeah, yeah.
Off the top, you know, and I'd be happy to discuss it formally, but maybe the cities and towns would be better to tell us.
Yeah.
In whose, where's good compromise, because they're going to get in a position of...
Yeah.
Every, you know, and we...
Well, to that end, again, and I...
We already have some of our favorites that we give money to.
You don't want to act in the vacuum. I'm thinking, when you set the virtual meeting up, I would hopefully, we'll be part of that, you know, sitting in there.
Oh, yes, you're, you're driving the boat.
Okay, yeah, great.
Okay.
And as we put in the letter, it's a listening session, Commissioner, where a lot of these communities, or many, I should say, have already begun developing their own ARPA strategies and steering groups. So they'll have an idea of how they want their programs to run. I just want to point out one thing, that as the program commences over a three- to five-year life cycle, consider that many communities will likely be applying for larger projects upfront, conceptually. As those projects wind down or become completed, it's, it's, it's conceivable that some of those projects cost either will yield a surplus or, or what, that we can then look at and say, you may want to, at this point, can consider more short-term awards towards nonprofits and things like that, that are not tied up with multi-year contracts and, and supply and demand factors. So I think there's a couple of different ways you could look at it, and we've heard, and I know you've stated it many times, and it's something we'll say a lot in our virtual meeting, please be patient. The development of the program is very early. We are, we are going to go into this with a full heart, with the right intentions, and I, and I think we should all consistently repeat the phrase, the cities and towns come first. That's who we're here to serve. So I, I intend to develop with assistance from other communities, excuse me, counties, a program that achieves your goals and the goals of our customers, the cities and towns, and then work out these details later about whether or not some recipients are part of it.
That was the message, Mr. Chairman, I did convey to both administrators, and I tried to be consistent as a board. We wanted to make sure we're on the same page, so that's fine. That's great. Great job. No further questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Good job, John.
So with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I would like to get your agreement that I will bring forth, the list of CPA firms in public next week, so that we can discuss setting up times to interview them virtually, and I'll develop the scope of what that projected project would be.
Sounds good.
Very good. I'll have some opinion next week. Thanks.
Give me a formal vote or just direction?
No, it's just administrative direction.
Yeah, it's fine. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Number sixteen, report of the County Director, which will include facilities maintenance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'll start off with the Abrahams' report. We've had multiple calls with the Abrahams' report this week, as Mark and his team begin to wrap up the various sections associated with the deliverable. As of this week, I believe we have over a half a dozen units or sections of the report that are in draft form making their way around. That includes the IT consolidation, Walliston, treasury, engineering, human resources, received one today, which is purchasing. Mark's goal is to have the stakeholders get back to him with edits and comments relative to those before they get to you. So these, these pieces are starting to come together. This morning, I had a conference call with Finance Committee person, Beth Childs, and Mark Abrahams. We have slotted September, excuse me, September, July twenty-seven, twenty-seventh, which is a Tuesday, was a Finance Committee meeting with Mark to go over the financial procedures. The goal is to have the Finance Committee also review this document, which is a critical deliverable within this packet, so that by the time it gets to you, it has received critical FinCom feedback and possible endorsement. Currently, and this is a penciled date, but Mark and I discussed having his draft report to you by August eleventh. We're mindful that Chairman Shea is on vacation the following week, so we're trying to get the deliverable to you by that date. In the event that the Chair and the Commission so desire, I would think it would be reasonable to slot Mr. Abrahams' report to the Commissioners a separate meeting, rather than as part of the annual or the weekly... uh, rather than as part of the annual or the weekly agenda, but that's your call. Given the gravity and content that he'll be discussing, it could be quite a few questions and material to go through, and it might be best to have it on a certain, second, separate day, but we'll go through the chair and his wish for that.
Okay. Uh, you don't have a tentative date yet on opera, do you, for that other, the virtual meeting of the administrators?
No, but the letter said within thirty days, so, you know, we're hoping to get it sometime in mid-August, uh, but I have not developed a date yet.
Could be a busy month, Mr. Chairman, huh?
Things are shaping up that way.
Yeah, okay. Um, I'd rather not have, I mean, whatever works. I'm, I'm open for whatever works. You can do it virtually.
Yeah, and you know, it's a tough time. You said it earlier, vacations and so forth. Do the best we can.
Yeah, that's fine.
Uh, regarding FY twenty-one close, I just wanted to announce that in conversations with, uh, Assistant Treasurer Daria, um, the county closed very favorably, um, or is closing. I believe we're about ninety-nine percent closed. There was a delay of receipts from the register, uh, which came in on Monday after our close date, which was Friday. Uh, but he's spent the last two days wrapping things up. I got an email from him today regarding our surplus. Things are trending quite well. I'll have more information for you regarding that, um, as soon as he certifies the closure. Um, incidentally, I had a meeting with, uh, Phil last week regarding the FY twenty-one tracking budget. I think we'll put in place some roles, especially for Phil in FY twenty-two, to help me, um, see the pulse every month, um, regarding how each budget within the county is performing. Um, as you all know, each individual unit, whether it's facilities or engineering or schools, they're responsible for their own budgets, but their material, um, uh, financial status is reported to us, monitored by Phil. Um, I'm gonna ask him to take a more affirmative role in tracking where we are, uh, benchmark-wise on our expenditures, so that we can see any lag, surpluses or troubles before they become such. So FY twenty-two shaping up to be quite good. Um, one other thing I wanted to point out, it's, uh, we're, we're related to FY twenty-two. I sent down a memo on Friday directing all the county departments to move ahead with their FY twenty-two capital budget. This commission approved that budget back in June. It totaled one point one million or one point three, I can't recall the exact amount, but there were a couple of dozen projects within this, um, uh, portfolio of projects, some which need bidding. Uh, a major one, um, includes the Dedham District Court, which I'll talk to in just a second. The remainder of them, um, all appear to be known to the various groups, and again, I've asked each group or each budget to report back to me on quarterly basis on how they're benchmarking against their budget for their respective projects. Uh, in capital work, um, more so than in operating, it takes a long time to get contracts and work scheduled and performed, and inevitably, as the clock ticks, you will start to see some slide or surplus delivered. Um, and I don't want people to come forth in April or May and say, oh, I didn't get to that project because X, Y, and Z, and then they're, then they're left with a surplus. I'd rather know what that surplus is sooner, so that we can use it for certain projects that are in the queue. Uh, incidentally, there are two projects that are queuing right now that will be part of, um, the September Advisory Board discussion, uh, that are unfunded. Those would be the walkways at the Wallaston Golf Course, as well as the IT improvements that Mark McDonald's working on, that include security and improvements for the building. So those will be coming forthcoming in September. So that concludes my Abraham's report, my financial report regarding facilities, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm just here to report that Stoughton District Court, um, it seems like a hundred years ago, Commissioner Stady and I went out there and everything was looking good. They were putting their head in the ceiling to find out what's going on. But, um, the progress has been slow. Um, the engineering firms completed their work, or near completed it. John McGowan, uh, attended a meeting yesterday afternoon. Um, they are providing us a report of a timeline associated with the work to put the steel in, and then began the work of the duck work to get the new, uh, units in, in, installed. Mr. McGowan reports that he spoke to the clerk, um, Ms. Hughes, as well as the justice. Um, they're completely understanding. They are conducting their business. The court is in session. There is no urgent need to move forward with this, other than allow the engineering and the firm to schedule the work and get it done. Um, much longer term to get this done than I think Commissioner Stady and I were led to believe back in June, but, um, the report will be forthcoming, and I'll share those details as early as next week when we meet again. Uh, Dedham District Court I mentioned, uh, is in our budget for capital improvements this year. Mr. McGowan will be working with Nancy Rockwell to put that project out to bid. Dedham Superior Court, we had our entry meeting with Colson Contractors yesterday. Um, uh, clerk, um, Timlty and the assistant clerk, uh, Mary Hickey were there. Um, the staff was on site. We took a walkthrough. We identified a laydown area. There is, there are some concerns about the project with respect to secure onsite security. They're going to be, uh, obviously conducting work within this historic building, court, so forth, jury rooms. Um, the outside work will have some impact on the building as this is going on. Currently, they're looking to start the work within the August to September timeframe and work through at least Thanksgiving or until the weather turns to approximately thirty-two degrees regularly. They're gonna be removing a lot of, excuse me, uh, masonry, uh, that is in need of repair, as well as product on the dome. Um, that product is lead, but it's gonna be done according to EPA standards. Um, there will be, obviously, the courtroom is drawing in a lot of outside air. So we spent a fair amount of time talking about the secure nature of how are they gonna achieve, um, getting their work done without disturbing, um, the business of the court. Uh, Walter Timlty flat-out said, if there's a problem, I'm gonna set you down. Uh, and I think they heard the, the, uh, the direction bottom clear. I implore the onsite, uh, foreman to, um, embrace his customer service role and check in with Walter daily to make sure that the work is going smoothly. They will mothball the plant, uh, project rather during the winter. They do not intend to be up on the roof during the winter. The question still remains, what kind of, um, uh, scaffolding and material will be left behind during the winter? My preference is for them to remove the planks, but leave the structure in place. Um, but, uh, the project will then resume in the spring once the weather, uh, turns favorable. So overall, the project will take about a year for completion. Uh, it's a one-point-three-million-dollar job. It will have a huge improvement on this historic, uh, building, and, um, I think folks are optimistic that, given the experience of the contractors that they have, things should go smoothly. Contractors, uh, did the dome at the State House. Uh, very briefly, in the interest of time, Mr. Chairman, just one other brief update. Uh, the Renton Brookline, uh, boilers, we're getting quotes from a contractor right now. Those items do not have a funding, uh, source identified. They'll be put on the, uh, on-deck circle, be it capital or surplus dollars. More, more to come on that. I think that is all for now, sir.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you. Uh, what's the status on the search for the veterans agent?
We, um, we're waiting to hear from Dale Kurtz. He is meeting today with, um, uh, staff in Avon. Um, Eric Beckerman, who was, um, on the Finance Committee, came to see me last weekend, I believe it was, and I introduced the idea that, um, with Dale leaving, we may be looking to find out if Avon was still interested. He was not aware of this development. He went back to his town, and I think with Dale's help, he has generated some internal discussions about whether or not the service will be needed. Frankly, Commissioner, I think what they're looking to do is to see if Stoughton would be a, a natural partner for them to conduct their own little regional, uh, work there. So we have not posted the position yet.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we don't have assurances that there is a job there full-time. Um, but as soon as Dale is done with his meeting and Avon, he tells me to let me know what their intentions are. That meeting's today.
Timeline of, oh, today.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Um, you covered the other thing in terms of.
Good night.
And, uh.
Yeah. Your peers.
I'm good.
Your peers.
Oh, my God. Totally, totally. Take a look, hearing good.
That's pretty good for you.
Yeah. The West Point guy can fly.
I, I was in Avon this morning, so, uh. Go on, step up here, Dale. Okay, I don't wanna.
Yeah.
Hello, Dale. Hi, how are you?
Well, thank you.
Get your feet to the seal.
Yep. Go ahead.
Uh, so I talked with Franklin, and I'm having a follow-up conversation with them next week, but they, you know, they have decided on their own. Avon has had a discussion with Stoughton. But the Stoughton VSO is retiring the first of August.
Oh, wow.
He may stay on part-time. And he and I talked yesterday. We're good friends. And he's gonna go back and talk to his town administrator, carrying on the load, and Stoughton may not be, or in Avon, for Stoughton may not be an issue, so that's something they're looking at. Um, Avon, I expect will terminate the agreement, uh, on the twenty-second. Uh, that's, uh, at least I know will be taken to the board. And that's, uh, the recommendation that they're making. What they're going to do is if they can work out something with Stoughton, they will. They may try to, uh, get a, a former VSO from somewhere to fill in part-time on a, a basis, so. But that's sort of where they are.
Okay.
Uh, connecting with another town other than Stoughton is just not feasible. Uh, the other towns are contiguous. Would not be a good connection.
Anything going on with the Norfolk Franklin thing with Norfolk? We were gonna pursue that.
Twenty twenty-three, uh, fiscal year twenty-three.
Okay, okay, all right.
Uh, there have been some other discussions in that area, whether it be.
Bellingham or something, or whatever.
Yeah, Bellingham just hired a new, um, VSO.
I see.
Uh, who I believe covers, uh, Bellingham and Huxbridge. So there's a lot of movement going on.
Good.
So the path ahead for the Norfolk County role is ambiguous at best. Um, it would appear to be difficult to manage in a full-time role at this point, given the, um, circumstances. Um, but, uh, more to come, I guess, when they execute their, their vote in whatever steps to.
Right.
Are you familiar with that program I mentioned earlier? Uh, we started about the, oh, sorry. I mentioned I got contacted by a friend of someone whose wife, uh, uses horses for, uh, veterans with equestrians, so PF, PTSD.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I worked with, uh, similar groups in the past. Uh, you know, anytime you can provide some type of outlet for a veteran who needs that support, it's great.
Sure.
Um, there are pros and cons.
Okay, like anything, I'm sure. Okay. Thank you, Dale.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great to see you.
Thank you, Dale.
Thank you. See you again.
Great timing.
Yeah, really.
Okay, um, number seventeen. Topics the chair did not reasonably anticipate would be discussed. They don't have any. We are meeting next week. A regular mismatch meeting, um. I did get a late letter today that I distributed, but we'll put it on a future agenda relative to the parking lot over here, so. I just, do you have, do you have a copy of this? Okay, I just wanted to show we put it on. It doesn't have to be next week, but maybe the week after.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a suggestion at this time too? Just a suggestion. Uh, we have a new engineer on staff.
Yes.
Uh, of course, we have a new director who's doing a great job. I was gonna say, it'd be great for me, I think for us as commissioners, if we could get reports from them, maybe appearances on our agenda, maybe every once, like every two or three months, have them come in, give them a little report of how they're doing.
Four times a year?
Yeah, you know, just.
Four times a year?
Yeah, maybe four times a year. I'd like that. You know, I, I don't wanna be, I'd like not see them just for the budget. I think it'd be great if we had a formal check-in. Patrick, how's it going? What's going on? And I know you meet with them as department heads.
Yeah.
But I think we should as also have a little interaction and have them come in, so we could schedule maybe, you know, they'll spread it out, move it around, what works for works, but it'd be great to see Patrick, Wallaston, you know, our various department heads come in and, and talk to us and make that time to go back and forth.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay? Great, thank you.
Well, including that, well. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chairman. Oh, wait, to recess?
Yes, sir.
To recess?
Oh, okay. That's three weeks in a row for you, okay.
One more time.
Oh, should we reduce?
Do we need to do his swearing in, in public session?
Hope.
Or is that?
I'm sorry, Phil.
Through the chair, per Nancy and per the new assistant treasurer, we can adjourn.
Oh, Leslie, breaking news, thank you very much.
Oh.
Excellent. Excellent move as an assistant treasurer.
All right, it's a great move. Great, it's a bet. I'll move, we adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
I was taking it all in favor of adjourned.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
The first time in a month we adjourned, right? Yeah. That was so weird. All right, great. Let's get this guy's one in. Mike, Mike Colati wants to go to lunch.
Before we came in and talked to the secretary at the school. John, you're having a good time?